We're gonna go ahead and get started, team. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Sunbury Council meeting. It is October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven thirty P M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation under our laws, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Joe St. John?
Here.
Mister Capel?
Here.
Mister?
Here.
Mister Ghost?
Here.
Mister Grumney?
Here.
Mrs. Cooper?
Here.
Mister Martin is walking in. Seven present. We have four of them.
Thank you. Would you mind turning the volume up on the speakers just a smidgen tiny bit? Thank you. All right, we did have a meeting on October first, and we're looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
We got a motion by Mrs. Cooper, sec- and a second by Mister Capel, I think.
I think it was half of each of those, yeah, okay.
Mister Capel. Getting that one.
Just taking that.
Discussion? Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call.
Mrs. Cooper? Yes. Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mister?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Epstein.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Six yeas, motion passes.
At the end of the public participation portion of the meeting, this is the visitor's section. Are there any visitors that would like to speak with city council? Excuse me. Excuse me, ma'ams.
Yeah.
One of you, if one of you could state your name.
Molly.
Molly, thank you. You'll have up to three minutes to speak with city council. City council may choose to respond to you, but I wouldn't expect it. So the floor is yours for three minutes. Go ahead.
Wes Minnie?
Yes, please.
Amory?
Amory.
Molly.
Molly and?
Hayden.
Hayden. Nice to meet you.
We're troop five-one-six-four. Very so excited to be here and to learn more about the government. Thank you.
Awesome. Good work.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. It looks like you have several of your friends here tonight from truth, from troop five-one-six-four. And I love this troop. They're growing up right in front of our eyes. In one session, we got to do, this is the uh, the election group that we got to do. The simulated election with some of these girls. That's a lot of fun. So thanks for coming back. Hopefully this helps you. And you're able to earn your, is it a merit badge?
I'm seeing.
Government badge, so hopefully we'll help you get there. All right. Are there any other visitors that wish to speak with city council? All right. Uh, next is the committee reports, and maybe we can start with the fire. Do we want to start with fire? Come on up, Sergeant.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Stelzer, B S T N D Fire District. Uh, tonight is my term to brief the council on news with the fire station. Um, as you know, we're building the second station right now. Things appear to be on track. We're looking for a March timeframe for Station Two out at Wilson Road. Um, even bigger news, though, as you may have seen on B S T N G Fire District's Facebook page, is we were awarded a Saper grant. So, and that is through FEMA, which in turn for us means we can hire six full-time firefighters uh, with the federal government picking up most of the budget. It's it's over a three-year base. Uh, seventy-five percent the first two years, and then it goes down on the third year, and then the fire district would cover the next. So that helps us immensely with covering Station Two um, in this growing area.
Yeah, and I was able to attend the fire board meeting this uh, this past session. This is a big highlight for the group. I mean, it's a when you think of um, you know, you open up a new station, you've got an only outfit completely, but you have staff it, right? And um, that the, to to be awarded that grant is a major step in the right direction. It is, I think, seventy-five, seventy-five, and then the third year is thirty-five, if I'm not mistaken. And then, you know, the community's, you know, on the hook for the rest. But at that point, you've built up some muscle memory around like the financials. But, you know, I I feel like the fire boards are doing a really good job. I I feel like the the fire leadership and the staff is doing a really good job preparing for the move. Again, this is a brand-new fire station that's half-covered by the B S T N G Fire District, but the capital cost is also half-covered by the county. Uh, because it's gonna be a shared station, beautiful station, by the way. And uh, they've been able to benefit, at least in the construction season, from a lot of the dry weather that we had, and I think they're pretty much on track from what the plan was. Is that right?
As close as can be.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions for the lieutenant? Comments? Thanks for being here this evening.
Congratulations, yeah.
Thanks, Chief. Right.
Uh, Mister Drayer, any committee reports?
Not this time.
All right, Mister Grumney.
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, we had our finance meeting uh, this evening. Uh, and we talked about several topics, uh, the first being the twenty-twenty-four GAAP financial statements. Um, that's just a new uh, accounting, new uh, application of accounting principles to the city is to follow. Um, we got a highlight or executive overview from Miss Stefan um, on those statements. Um, and uh, you know, covering uh, they are not audited statements. They are, they will be audited, though, in the year uh, twenty-twenty-six. Both twenty-four and twenty-five results will be audited in the year twenty-twenty-six. So again, we had a high-level view of those statements. Uh, we talked uh, for the second time uh, around the twenty-twenty-six budget draft. Uh, we went through conversation regarding their revenues and expenses and a nice discussion on capital expenses with the help of Miss Odebrowski. Um, and so uh, that went very well. And then we looked at our typical year-to-date comparison reports. Um, our our check register, bank-to-book reconciliation, and uh, income uh, tax category, which continues to grow, which which we're uh, very, very happy about. So um, that's kind of the highlights. Um, we also, I also want to mention, and Mayor, hopefully I have this number right. You talk, you specifically brought up the recognition of impact fees.
That's right.
And I think we had a little over two million dollars so far in impact fees.
Forecasted for next year alone is two-point-one million dollars.
Two-point-one million dollars, so uh, uh, and and that's a lot of recognition to to staff and and others for uh, getting that going and helping the city uh, as it looks forward. So uh, those will come in very, very handy, and that was good forward-thinking, so. Um, that's all I have.
Yeah, one thing I would say that's just rolls right off the tongue. When you think impact fees, think growth pays for growth.
Right. Yep.
Perfect.
Very good. Thank you.
Mister Capel?
Nothing tonight.
Mrs. Cooper?
Nothing tonight.
Mister Martin?
Nothing.
Mister Ghost?
And now you're rolling right along. We're gonna be out here in about fifteen, twenty minutes.
Police report. I'm getting no police report. Just kidding, Sergeant.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as some of you may know, we had a Charlie Kirk vigil here yesterday. Department would like to thank everyone who assisted with making this vigil a safe gathering. Uh, the vigil was not a city event or gathering. However, the city had a re- obligation to make this vigil safe. We reached out to surrounding jurisdictions for assistance, and they responded without question. So I would like to thank the Delaware Tactical Unit, the Front County K nine unit, and the Delaware County Sheriff's Ops Drone Team for helping us yesterday. Would also like to thank our officers, every single one of them. They all put in some sort of time, whether they came in early for their shifts. They came in on their days off, or they had quick turnarounds. Every single officer had something to do with this um, vigil, making it safe. So also would like to thank everybody um, from the planning team and the speakers who attended and made this a safe and enjoyable vigil. Uh, moving on to community engagement, the police department has has had a um, a good visit with the annual coffee with a cop at the in, at Walnut Trail. Uh, probably the largest crowd we've had so far with questions. Um, moving on to something that we've been dealing with. So we've seen an upgrade or uptick in mental health calls for juveniles. We just wanted to make the public aware to please be observant. And if you see anything that seems to be out of the ordinary, please let us know. And that's basically all I have.
Any questions for Sergeant Holden? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would like to say the Charlie Kirk event, it was totally under control. It's with the police office.
Oh, thank you.
Totally.
Right, next item, uh, the administrator report. Mister Hennessy.
All right, so first item on the agenda, the municipal building lower level renovation. Just want to let uh, council members know and the residents know that we do plan on having the building closed tomorrow, Friday, and Monday um, for renovation to the lower level. The tomorrow's um, um, closure is to basically fog the building to help with mold that may be in the basement. And then um, Friday and Monday, we'll have a sanitary super team over there uh, working on replacement of the sanitary line. So, having said that, uh, the the uh, my report says that uh, the contractor is on schedule and expects to be done on time, but we did get a little bit of a hiccup from the Delaware County Building Department, so stay tuned for for that. So we're working through an issue. We're working through an issue with uh, with the building department, so hopefully it doesn't result in any meaningful delays. Um, I just uh, mentioned that uh, Alex attended for me a business retention visit with Hitachi Estimo. An opportunity to see what they had done in terms of their expansion. The the important note, I think, here is that um, uh, they are having difficulty attracting employees. Uh, they've got long-tenured employees. They see some of those starting to um, uh, retire out of the system. And obviously, they, you know, been a tremendous employer here in our areas. So so the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, one Columbus team are gonna try to assist them in terms of new recruitment efforts, so. And the final thing I will note here is I did talk about the superloads coming through. We thought the first one was gonna come through last Sunday. They've actually adjusted the schedule. So the first one is this Sunday and the next two Sundays. So same uh, uh, same drill. So any questions for me?
Thanks for pointing that out, because I was gonna ask later how the, how it went, so.
Well, stay tuned. I'll let you know.
That's another comments questions? All right, uh, Mrs. Odebrowski, the engineer's report.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Uh, just a few updates. The Columbus Street parking lot is going smoothly. So far, you should notice that they have leveled out the parking lot area. Um, removed quite a bit of dirt, and they will be working on putting in that foot-and-a-half section that includes pavers so that we can do some drainage improvements as well. Uh, still on schedule, so around the holidays, so Thanksgiving time period, we should have a parking lot forming. So if there are any delays, I will let you know. For the design updates, East Granville Street widening, you have the uh, final design contract from American Structure Point. Third reading um, in the packet today um, so that we can finalize the design um, and get moving on the bid package. Don't get too excited. It is a very long design time period. The construction won't be until twenty-twenty-seven, so we won't be bidding out the project until around that time period. For J R Smith Park improvements, uh, we did receive the ninety percent plan submission on October tenth. Um, we are quickly trying to do a review there uh, to make sure that all of our comments from the sixty percent were addressed um, so that we can hopefully move that along uh, and get that project bid out and also coordinate with the bonding process as well. I have added an item for the twenty-twenty-six street improvement design. Uh, we have contracted with Advanced Civil Design Group to start looking at doing the designs for next year. Uh, this was an update that I shared um, with the Services Committee um, two weeks ago. But uh, they'll be starting their work on Vernon Street, south of Columbus. Uh, sorry, south of Granville Street to Columbus Street. Um, and they'll be all, they'll be looking at the intersection of Cherry and Morning Street. So I'm saying this because one of the first things that they'll do is survey work. So people may see some flags out in those areas. Um, certainly, if anybody has questions, they can reach out to me, but these are just the preliminary steps to see if we can do some more in-depth improvements in those two locations. Uh, they also may see uh, some survey work on uh, North Miller Drive on the north side of the intersection at Cherry Street. And then for Delco Water, uh, Evening Evening Street is um, completed for their main line installation. They still have restoration work to do um, at the Granville intersection. Uh, Delco Water has another planned replacement project on Cherry Street in the North Miller Drive area. When I get a little bit more information on that project, I'll share with the group. Um, they haven't given me a timeline on when they plan to do that instruction, that construction yet. But once they do, um, I'll share with the group. They're not planning on impacting traffic, which I think is a key component here. So they're not planning on lane closures, so um, I think that will will help with work along Cherry. And then finally, uh, today and yesterday, I attended the Ohio uh, OTEC, the Ohio Transportation and Engineering Conference Downtown Columbus. Uh, gathered with my other engineering colleagues, friends, um, to take uh, technical sessions and learn what people are doing in central Ohio and other parts of um, the country. So it was a great event. And um, I'm excited to think about some of the safety improvements that we could make here in our community as I kind of digest um, some of the information that I received.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Any questions? Do you do any of those fun games when you go to conferences where you like track the number of times somebody says like a certain word? Like mobility, safety, efficiency? I do that.
You do?
Yes, I'm one of those.
I haven't, but you know, the next time I go to a conference, I definitely could think of those words.
Yeah.
Yeah, safety.
Drive me crazy.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
Sounds good. Thanks. Any questions other than the question I asked? Thank you, Mrs. Odebrowski. Next item on the agenda, resolutions, third reading, resolution number twenty-twenty-five dot two-six. Resolution, by the way, troop fifty-sixty-one is for, like, basically where the government is making some sort of change or enhancement to the way we do things. Um, so if you want to take a note on that. Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dot two-six, a resolution accepting a proposal from American Structure Point, Inc., for preliminary design services for the City of Sunbury State Route Thirty-seven road widening and pedestrian bridge project, and I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Discussion? Roll call.
Here, St. John?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister?
Yes.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passes.
Right. No second readings, no first readings, so resolutions are complete. Ordinance is troops fifty-sixty-one. Over, basically like we're in the acting law. It's probably more, a little bit more serious than a resolution. And uh, this will go in the book. So third reading, these have already been discussed two times. This is the third time. Third reading ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dot two-eight. An ordinance establishing parking restrictions for the municipal parking lot located at nine East Granville Street, Sunbury, Ohio, four-three-zero-seven-four, and declaring an emergency. I'll make a motion on the ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mister Capel. Discussion? Roll call.
Here, St. John?
Yes.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mister?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passing?
Motion on ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dot two-eight.
Second.
Second by Mister Capel. Discussion? Roll call.
Here, St. John?
Yes.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mister?
Yes.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passes.
And last thing, troop fifty-sixty-one. So I'm gonna do some second readings and first readings. Typically, um, laws and ordinance and and resolutions need to be read three times unless there are circumstances dictating that we need to move faster, which will suspend those rules. So we're gonna read some second readings and just let it flow through the process. This is an ordinance, second reading. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dot two-nine, an ordinance approving the application of Jared Foder to rezone approximately one-point-four-one-zero-plus-or-minus acres of property owned by NMO Properties LLC located at one forty-two East Granville Street from industrial district to commercial district C two, pursuant to the City of Sunbury zoning code, and that's a reading only. Next item on the agenda, first reading, ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dot three-zero. An ordinance declaring the improvement to a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation. Establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund and providing for the collection and deposit of service payments into that fund. Specifying the public infrastructure improvements directly benefiting the parcel and declaring an emergency. If you ever have questions about what any of this means, number one, you can go to an attorney, or you can use Chat G P T. It's my recommendation. That's actually, it's a lot cheaper.
They're head-based, thank you.
Look at our citizens. Oh, man, I love this group. All right. We're on to do an unfinished business. Mister Drayer, anything new or unfinished?
You know, I just want to say it was really a good event, the Charlie Kirk event on the square. I have never seen so much prayer on the square. It was outstanding and really cities and villages should really do that at least once or twice a a year. It was an outstanding event, and we all need to be reminded of all that biblical. So I, it's really a good idea to do it again. It was a great event.
Great. Thank you, Mister. Anything else?
No, I know.
All right. Thank you, Mister Grumney.
I I just have one thing, um, and and maybe I need a a little bit of education, because I don't remember the process, but when a vendor comes into a development, they are to get a uh, a permit, correct, to do that? Okay. Um, how does that process typically take, like the door-to-door folks? Because we we've had quite a few in our community, and I think it'd be helpful. It's maybe on our Facebook page, even though I don't have Facebook, or on the, it's to say, who's been approved to be in the communities? Um, that way is something to go to and say, okay, yes, this is, this is a legit vendor that's gone through the process versus someone pulling up on the segways. Uh, you know, trying to sell you something, and I don't know, and some of them can be downright very uh, adamant and pushy and rude, honestly. So, um, you know, again, I'd like to know.
Yeah, so so maybe what we can do is uh, yeah, create a a link of maybe active permits. I think right now every permit is issued for. I I think we were talking about making it a six-month window, um, but it might be a year. So but like I said, maybe we can identify those of an active uh, permit. There are names attached to the permit as well, not just a a business. Um, so we'll try to find a way to to do that as well. Uh, you know, in terms of the process itself, um, we did change that up a little bit recently. So it now actually goes through the planning staff first, just to make sure that whatever they're trying to sell or whatever is not inconsistent with the city's code.
Yeah.
Uh, zoning code mostly. Um, and then it goes to the police department for a background check. So um, it does take a little bit of time. I mean, maybe a week.
Yeah.
Two, kind of, yeah, for somebody to be able to come in and get it. And then we've also limited the number, so no company can come in and get a whole bunch. I think you can now only get two per application. So maybe four total for.
And can we revoke those permits if if, for example, you get a swarm of complaints of just how it behaves, so you can't? Okay, all right, cool.
Yeah.
Do the vendors have to carry a copy of the permit with them? They do.
Okay.
The actual.
Uh, yes.
Cause I've asked for that, and they're like, no, it's on file.
Now, it says they're supposed to carry it with them.
Okay.
Yeah, that's really good to know.
The actual people knocking on the doors, Mister Hennessy, they have to be listed on the permit?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. Because that's how the background check is done by the individual.
They want pet services, solar, like that commission's got to, they have to be, so.
Right.
My goodness, they are aggressive.
Yeah, they are. That's all I have.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, sure.
Mister Capel?
Uh, nothing to me.
Mrs. Cooper?
Nothing tonight.
Mister Martin?
When we adjourn, before we all jump up and run out of here, I think we should invite the Girl Scout troop to come up and stand and have a picture taken.
A second that. Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Yeah, great point. Thank you, Mister Martin. Mister Ghost, any new or unfinished?
Yeah, yesterday we had the pleasure of attending the ribbon-cutting opening ceremony with Miss Cooper and Mister Mayor for Dunkin' Donuts. So it's now officially open.
Very excited.
Yeah, very excited. That was a great event.
It was good. Did a nice job.
The funniest part of the entire thing, I I wouldn't even say funny, like Dunkin' takes this very seriously. And they brought like the mascot uniform, and one of the cheerleaders wore the donut in uniform, and it was amazing. I don't even know who that person was, but.
I've been to a lot of ribbon cuttings, and that one was cool, because I've never seen them invite the big walnut cheerleaders.
Oh, the cheerleaders were so pumped. Asked them afterwards, I was like, is this bad to get out of school? They're like, no, we love this.
They got the great.
Now, we gotta have Nancy reach out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was cool.
I think there'll be a picture on our page, right?
If I can, I have plenty of them, so yeah.
Case anyone's interested.
Yeah, it was cool.
What I wanted to say about the uh, the event last night, first of all, thank you to law enforcement. Um, I think they're I I was aware of a lot of the detailed planning behind the scenes, so I mean, when I was walk- walking around, I could see like the spheres of protection. Felt very safe. Um, thank you to our staff for handling, you know, this uh, what is a very sensitive topic and uh, can get political, I think handled it in a an extremely sensitive and um, professional way. And uh, I was I was really proud of like the crowd last night for cleaning up basically everything um, themselves. There, I mean, it was like they weren't even here, and there were hundreds and hundreds of people on the square last night. So I mean, just well-attended, very uh, docile crowd, docile as in like, uh, there's screaming, no, nothing like that. It was, it was very calm, so thank you to our staff.
Your speech was good, too. I think it could be a second column.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda, new and unfinished business, boards and commissions. Um, this is on page seventy-six of, excuse me. Further back from that, seventy-two. Um, but maybe I can kick it to staff. I think our main purpose is just to call attention to this and that we do have quite a few openings coming up at the beginning of the year. Uh, Mister Hennessy.
Yeah, that that's that's really the reason that it's in your packet tonight. So on page seventy-six, so what you've got is the entire directory for the city. We've seen this document before. But on page seventy-six, I've highlighted the terms it'll be expiring at the end of the year, and I also um, um, highlighted some in green just because they're a little bit off-cycle and um, or or there's something unique about that particular person or and or position. So so the short answer is we'll be going out with a public announcement here, seeking people interested in serving on these boards and commissions. So we'll be ready to come back to you in December to begin to consider appointments. Um, under the Planning and Zoning Commission, John, you are on there only because, you know, you're serving for that two-year stint. Doesn't mean that you can't serve another term. I don't want to suggest that. Uh, Debbie Miller, Deborah Miller, she just has kind of an off-cycle term, and then I did have highlighted Nancy's position here because uh, after the election, um, she won't be able to serve in that capacity as well. So so that that does create another opportunity there. Um, under the uh, Board of Trustees for the Sunbury Community Development Authority, again, just a little off-cycle. So while we'll go out and do this um, this call here at the end of the year, there might be something that we'll have to do at the beginning of the year to kind of fill out these other positions. Uh, and then there are two positions that have expired on the uh, uh, East Community Development Authority, although we haven't formed, we haven't even met on that, so that's not that big a deal. Um, but Tim, we will have to find a replacement for you because you can't serve on both of those anyway. So anyway, lots of opportunities. Let your friends, family, and others know. And uh, if anybody has any questions about any of the positions, they can reach out to me.
Is there a residence requirement on these positions?
They're all, they have a residence requirements.
Okay, but I mean, as far as.
Not the one year.
Yeah, not, that's right.
That's only count, okay, so, okay. All right, good to know.
And Mister Hennessy, if these folks want to continue, they have to reapply?
Yeah, I'll ask them to, yeah, submit it updated.
And you'll give us heads up, like, your your term is up if you'd like to continue.
Yeah.
We'd like.
Yeah, we specifically reached out to the existing members.
You did, yeah.
That you did, yeah, okay.
Yep.
So and we have one here and uh the joint recreation.
No, sir.
And then, yeah. So that's important.
Yep. And that's it.
Okay.
On that.
Any questions, comments on that particular topic? Alright, um Like to cancel the October twenty-ninth city council meeting?
Second.
We got second, third, fourth, fifth.
Yeah.
Alright. And uh troop fifty sixty-one, this happens when you have um five Wednesdays in a month. You have three meetings. Sometimes you don't need three meetings, you just need two. So we're gonna be efficient with our time. Mark that on your, I checked off the box, I heard efficient. Alright, any other topics, city council? Uh fast question real quick, do we need to keep the meeting open to do the picture or can we close this meeting? Not talk as council members and get a picture?
And it's fine to do a picture.
Okay, after we close. Okay, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mister Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Here St. John?
Yes.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yeah.
Mister Ghost?
Yes.
Mister here?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?